All right, we're gonna open up in prayer. Lord, we thank you for this time that the council, mayor, and city manager can come together laying all differences and self-agendas aside. For they are here tonight for a purpose, and that's to make good, godly decisions that will prosper our city, businesses that are not against the word of God, and the people who live here. Lord, we set before you all matters being discussed tonight, for we want your will to be done in the city of Freeport. Lord, we ask that anything that is trying to drain Freeport's finances and peace cease now. Holy Spirit, soften hearts and give ears to hear and eyes to see what you want for this city to each council member as they make decisions tonight that will affect our community. We give you all the praise, honor, and glory here tonight in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Michelle. Now we'll officially call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Mayor Miller.
Here.
Alderman Clem.
Here.
Monroe will be marked absent for now. Simmons?
Here.
Parker?
Here.
Stacy is absent. Shadle?
Here.
Sanders?
Here.
And Sellers is absent.
And if I could please get a motion to allow remote access by Alderman Monroe?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Clem, seconded by Alderman Shadle. Madam Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Clem?
Aye.
Simmons?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
And Sanders.
Aye.
The motion passes five to zero. Monroe will be marked present at 6:02 PM.
Are we sure that he was able to connect?
I am.
You're there?
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, if you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Alderman Clem.
Thank you.
And this committee of the whole will be chaired by Alderman Clem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We need an approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
So moved.
Okay, we got... Do we wanna do roll call on that?
Who are you marking as the motion maker?
Motion maker is Mr. Shadle, the second is Mr. Parker.
Okay.
The third is Mr. Monroe.
Okay. Clem, what say you?
Aye.
Monroe?
Monroe?
Aye.
Simmons?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
And Sanders.
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes of the Committee of the Whole Meeting on October 10th, 2023. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Parker? Roll call.
That was Shadle and Parker?
Yeah, Shadle and Parker.
Clem?
Aye.
Monroe?
Aye.
Simmons?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
And Sanders.
Aye.
The minutes are approved, six to zero.
Thank you very much. Next item is public comments on agenda items limited to three minutes per person. We have one that is to be read. Would you please read that, Madam Clerk?
That was emailed from Eric Quick. As a resident of Freeport, I ask that you vote no on the proposed ordinance for the city of Freeport to opt out of the Illinois Paid Leave for All Workers Act. The act was created to provide a minimum of forty hours paid leave, and even though it allows home rule units to enact their own ordinances spelling out paid leave policies, it does require that home rule units at least meet the forty-hour minimum. The ordinance as drafted by the city staff appears to, under my interpretation, be opting out of the mandated forty-hour minimum law. By approving this ordinance, the city would be declaring itself to be above the law. Lawsuits will follow, costing the city more money, and will inevitably force them to adhere to the law in the end. Please vote no on the paid leave for all workers ordinance. Eric Quick.
Thank you very much. Is there any other person at this point? Because we might have brought this up early. Just wanted to make sure if anybody else wanted to make a public comment? If not, we'll move on to item number seven. Review of draft strategic goals and vision for 2024 to 2026 directed by Eric from Next Level. Eric? We look forward to hearing from you, and it was a pleasure working with you on this. There was a lot of good ideas discussed, a lot of input, and thank you for your hard work on it.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to work with all of you and to be here to walk through the plan with you all. I thought we would just... I won't read the entire plan to you word for word, but I thought we would just acquaint you and anybody attending the meeting with the plan and hit some of the highlights from each section, if that works for everybody. And along the way, if you have questions or ideas, that's the point of this discussion. All right, so... Hold on one second. Make it a little bigger. So you won't be able to see the whole page each time as we go, but I'll scroll along for all of you. The opening page really just talks about the purpose of the plan, of the vision. This page is about setting the vision for Freeport and the idea that this plan is designed by the mayor and council. It's designed to guide the work of the city and city staff, including the mayor and council, over the next two to three years, and provide direction to partners as well, and information to partners in the community about how the city intends to work over the next couple of years. So that's a little recap of this page. Let's see if I can get to the next page. I'll figure out the tech here as we go. Okay, I did it. All right. Then, this page highlights the vision itself. And when you read a vision statement like this, it's important to remember that it's just that. It's a vision. It's imagining that you're in a place, in this case, in a place called Freeport, Illinois, in 2040. And you're seeing the place as it says here. So I will read this because I think all of you and the citizens of Freeport, hearing this vision, matters. And so, "Freeport is a destination of choice in 2040, right? Our innovative city boasts an entrepreneurial economy with a vibrant and safe neighborhoods. Freeport supports an abundance of educational, cultural, and outdoor experiences for all residents, including visitors. Our community is connected, accessible, and welcoming. There are opportunities for growth for all." So this plan is all aiming at this vision. We're gonna take a few steps in that direction over the next two to three years with the goal that when we get to 2040, we can actually achieve the vision. And then, a city's mission statement is designed to explain how the city will work on achieving that vision. So the city is gonna work as an engaged partner that helps foster growth and an inclusive, vibrant city by providing efficient, modern services to the community. So pretty straightforward, what you would hope and expect from a city. And that's the city's mission and how you can expect them to work for the citizens of Freeport going forward here over the next two to three years. Then we move to a page called Priority Areas that lays out a set of priority areas. Reliable, strong, infrastructure, safe, and inclusive community, responsive, efficient government, a connected, accessible community, strong public-private partnerships, quality communication and engagement, effective land use, and vibrant arts and culture experiences. So these are all areas of focus. They all have strategies within them. All of the strategies are measurable, and as we go through, you're also gonna see that we have progress updates from... in each of these categories from work done in the previous plans. And I think that's really exciting and worth noting as you go through this plan. You can actually look back at previous plans, and you can look at the progress updates that are in this plan. The progress updates aren't comprehensive. There's lots more things that have been accomplished, but there are highlights of progress that have been made in past years through the strategic planning process. So here's an example of that. Each page is laid out similarly where the goal is a bit of a vision statement for that particular area of focus. In this case, strong, reliable infrastructure. So the goal is that the infrastructure is reliable, supports the needs of residents, economic growth, streets and sidewalks are well-maintained, water and sewer systems are up to date. All of these infrastructures, right? We use data to track problems and make decisions about where to spend resources. Everybody knows that infrastructure takes up a large portion of the resources for any government, especially a city government, with as many roads and sidewalks and the like that you have. So managing those resources is really important. The city's adopted some really great practices using data and GIS mapping to make sure that things are being repaired and replaced in the order that makes sense based on what the data says. Some key strategies in here. Improvement... or sorry, a street improvement plan that paves eight miles of street per year. This is a pretty dramatic increase to what you've been doing, and that's thanks to the new revenue stream that you all have developed. Developing and expanding the sidewalk plan, so this actually doubles the funding to do that. Execute water and sewer system improvements over a two-year rotation. And there's a series of those projects that are laid out. And then, improving public works facilities and improving public work wage structures, all part of having a strong, reliable infrastructure. A couple of highlights from the past. This idea of mapping all the streets in Freeport and really understanding their condition, and not just the streets, but what happens under the streets, everybody knows. And we've all seen this, and we wonder what the heck's going on. They just paved the street, and then they dug up the street to do the water main, and then they paved the street again, then they dug up the street a year later to fix the sewer. When you have these kinds of complete maps that you've been working on over the last couple of years, you can streamline those and prevent that kind of thing from happening. Water wells and water treatment plants and those sorts of things are all big accomplishments that you have had over the last two or three years. You know, they're not sexy. People don't run out to see any of those things, unfortunately. But they matter every time you turn on your faucet or flush your toilet, right? So these are big ideas that cities are responsible for and important parts of this plan, and big accomplishments over the last few years for the city of Freeport. Any questions on that page? All right. Safe, inclusive community. I'll just read the goal again here. The idea is for the community to be safe and inclusive. Our police, fire, and emergency management systems are well-equipped and staffed by a team of people who take a community service approach to their work, resulting in lower crime and faster response times. The community appreciates and supports their work. So part of the goal isn't just that they do the work, that the people of the community actually understand it and appreciate it, respect it. That comes from people understanding how they go about it and actually seeing the results over time. More on the goal, people from backgrounds feel welcome in any part of our community. The city's policies and practices foster equity inclusion, so that's both internal and external to the actual city government. Freeport's neighborhoods are safe and reliable with a small-town feel that attracts families and a growing workforce. Our neighborhoods are connected to the many parks and recreation areas. Residents have ownership in their neighborhoods and take pride in them. So some key strategies in here, there's a healthy list of strategies under this, and again, to be accomplished over two or three years. Increasing the police force census and implementing proven strategies for reducing crime, including a three-pronged staffing approach that includes community service officers, law enforcement, and social workers. So really, you know, you hear a lot about this in the news, changing the way police work and giving them the right tools to meet all the various demands that they're confronted with. This type of three-pronged approach is best practice and happening across the country and recommended by and supported by your own police chief. Hire and retain a diverse team, so this is throughout city staff. Just to, you know, again, when someone approaches the city for service, hopefully they see somebody that they can connect with and relate to, whether that's, you know, on the police force or in other parts of the government. Upgrading the community's police station. Deploying more technology to reduce gun violence and improve the efficiency of the police force. So a lot of safety and police-oriented things in the beginning of the plan. I gotta make this a little bigger for me now. Ensure neighborhoods and buildings are well-cupped, improving safety by... And there's a list of bullet points here, approaches that the city's gonna work on, policies and procedures to make that happen. Continuing funding and implementation of demolition and blight reduction. The city's done a lot of work in this area over the last five years or more, and that work is continuing. Improving neighborhoods by developing a program to activate vacant lots. So along the way, demolition of blight and abandoned properties means you end up with an empty lot. And now the city has an inventory of those lots. They know where they are, and they're gonna start to develop strategies to put those back into use. And then also maintaining the tree removal replacement program. Still have more to go on the trees. So things that have happened, speaking of trees, more than 350 dead trees have been removed, and the city's been able to maintain the Tree USA recognition in '21 and '22. So Tree USA is an organization that encourages cities to maintain tree canopies throughout their neighborhoods and throughout the city. And they actually use a, you know, a formula to sort of track that kind of progress. So while you're taking down dead trees, that doesn't mean there are no trees in Freeport. It means you're maintaining trees. Increasing demolition and the budget for demolition has grown... Actually, the funding for that has grown by three times over the past five years. So again, driving that progress to taking care of those situations. Fire department staffing has improved, and there's been a 40% increase in the percentage of the people of color on the police force in the past year. So these are all getting at those equity and inclusion strategies as it relates to the police force. Fire department being fully staffed, all progress that's happened in the last two to three years. And those are all elements, by the way, of the last strategic plan. All right, responsive, efficient government. So this one is all about how the government acts, the city government, and how to make it, as it says, responsive and efficient. So Freeport's city government responds quickly to community needs through open channels of communication internally and with the community. We use our debt capacity and revenue wisely to maintain and improve the city's infrastructure. We strive to control costs while providing the highest possible level of service. We have a diverse revenue base that enables us to plan for growth far into the future. The city government is trusted and transparent. The city is empowered to participate with the government... Or sorry, the community is powered to participate with the government using the latest technologies and communication methods. Some key strategies are increasing forgivable loan and grant programs to maximize taxpayer dollars. I think down below, you can see one of the progress indicators that, you know, isn't about... It is about this bullet point, but in previous plans. And I know it's hard to read on the screen, so I'll tell you what it said. It says, "More than $33 million in grants and forgivable loan funding have been secured over the past three years from outside Freeport to improve our streets, fire, and police service..." or sorry, "Police service and neighborhoods." So when we talk about increasing forgivable loans and grant programs, those are from other entities to the city of Freeport to help you do all of those types of good work. $33 million in the last three years is pretty amazing, and this strategy sets out to do even more of that. Facilitate cross-department collaboration and use of technology to improve efficiency. Explore project management software. So this is just a way for the departments in the city to work better, and lays out some examples of how that might be achieved. Increasing staff development, succession planning efforts by using individual development plans. Again, planning and developing staff so they can be the best at their jobs that they can be, and looking ahead and thinking about succession planning. Completing a job audit, an update of job descriptions, and a staffing map, you know, again, related to just making sure that we're running the city with the best people in the best seats all the time. Integrate the capital improvement plan with the city's comprehensive plan, so... and the strategic plan. So there's a lot of plans in the city, and they can... if you don't pay attention to them and ensure they align, occasionally, they can be out of alignment. In Freeport's case, I don't think there's much chance of that, but this step will make sure that there's no chance of that and that one plan isn't sort of directing against the other, that they really all align and work together. It sounds like a lot of plans, I know, but they all serve different purposes. And many of them are required in order to secure the funding we talked about in that first bullet point. So you may not even qualify for that forgivable loan program from the federal government if you don't have a comprehensive plan in place that names the priorities that that loan is for in it. So that's why these things matter. When you hear the city spending time on planning, they result in getting this kind of money back into the city. Any questions on that page? I think I forgot to ask if you had questions on the previous page. You know, you can just tell me. All right. Connected and accessible community. Who doesn't want that, right? "Our community is easy to navigate and connected globally by high-speed internet." When you drive... whether you drive a car, use Pretzel City Transit, ride a share... a rideshare, a taxi, bike, walk. Getting around Freeport is easy. Public transportation is widespread, frequent and reliable. Sidewalks, greenways, and nationally-recognized bike facilities get us where we wanna go safely and keep us active and healthy. So that's the goal, and some of the strategies to work toward that goal are supporting fiber network expansion through public-private partnership, increasing bike lanes and bike pedestrian pathways to everywhere. It's a good comprehensive list there. Exploring expansion of Pretzel City area transit services for a possible route in addition to on-demand service. So that's something we wanna look into and see what's possible. Supporting the Dubuque-Rockford Passenger Rail Committee to bring a commuter train to stop in Freeport. And I would have written that here tonight if it stopped in Galena on the way here, so maybe that'll happen before we all die. We'll see. But supporting that is an important initiative. So what's happened in this space over the last three years? A complete 5G network is growing and will be in place for all residents in the next few years. Bike path projects have received grants for improvements and expansion, and rideshare policies have been passed to allow those programs to operate. Any questions? All right.
Well, I wanted to ask a question.
All right.
Last meeting we was at. Are we talking about the same initiatives for the strategic planning? Are we still talking... is that what we were talking about now? Because I'm not hearing anything that we went through, the discussions that we gone through. Maybe I misunderstood all of that stuff, but I was there.
Yeah, you were there. You were there both days.
Yeah, but I just didn't... I just don't see where we cross paths with this strategic plan that we're being presented with right now. And so, I'm just curious. Are we on the same page?
Well, what I can tell you is that every single bullet point in this plan came from the day and a half that you spent with the group. The draft of this plan was shared three times with you and the rest of the group with giving you the opportunity to provide input, ask questions like this, and suggest that maybe it wasn't aligning if you thought that was the case.
I know we talked about...
You can do that now, too. But you'd have to provide some specifics if we're gonna make any changes.
Okay, all right. Well, if that's what we... and you did a lot of revision, because a lot of the conversation... A lot of the conversation that we was having does not present itself here to me, as far as what I'm listening to. I didn't know the greater Freeport partnership was factored into our conversation as we had that meeting. I don't recall them being said in that paragraph or a bullet point. So that's why I'm asking questions, simply because none of this crossed my path or we had any time to discuss some real serious strategic planning that was based up on all of the things that I'm hearing that you're reciting to us. I don't... I have not seen all of those things, and I wish I had... I wish I had the strategic plan in my hand long before you came in to make that... to have this discussion. Because it's supposed to be the vision of the... it's supposed to be the vision of the council. And... but I don't hear no input that the council talked about in regards to what the strategic plan was gonna look like from our vision point. From my... from our vision, the council does not... the ones that were there, it's not clear to me where all the additional information is coming from, and that's what I'm having a problem with. So... but anyway, I'm sitting here listening to it, but I still don't hear anything that we created or put emphasis on, on whatever the subject topic or whatever that mattered to us, as far as the council's vision. So I'm not hearing it in... I don't know. I don't know. I don't want... What I don't want is our comments to get cloudy up in some other kind of scenario. I don't want what we talked about get clouded up in something else. I mean, that's what I'm hearing. I don't have the plan in front of me.
Alderman Clem?
No, I was just gonna say, probably Alderman Sanders, one of the places that most of the things that we came up at... Most of the things, if you look at goals and stuff, some of the stuff was tweaked somewhat due to the changes over the past four years or so. But most of the stuff that you'll see that has been changed or has been added to are in the key strategies, okay? So that's where the body of some of the... most of the stuff that we changed came up. Okay, so that's where the body of some of, most of the stuff that we changed came up.
Well, I wish I had a precursor to all of this.
Sure.
You know, I, I don't wanna be sitting here looking like a dunce of something that we created. We were the ones that had the plan, and, and I'm sitting here just as ignorant as I can be because a lot of stuff has changed. A lot of stuff had changed that we implemented. And if there's gonna be change like that, I'd like to have a notification or some kind of a reason why I'm sitting here going over something that is not clear to me.
Alderman Clem, mine?
Sure, Madam Mayor.
Alderman Sanders, every single one of these bullet points of strategies were taken from the very sheets that, that Eric filled out during those two days of meetings. And he has sent three different drafts updating the council.
To who?
So every single one of you. So you've, you've had it in your hand, if you wanted to print it off, three times since that meeting. So to say that he's not given you.
No, no, I don't recall that.
And it's, and it's even in the agenda for tonight?
No, no, it's, no, no. Did you not hear him say some things had to be revised or changed and things like that?
No, he sent out three different drafts for the council members to be able to give additional input from what that meeting was that you were a part of for two days. So he didn't remove anything that, any of those ideas that you said, they're all in here.
I don't see any of that up there.
Can you give one example?
Yeah, I don't see any of it.
One example?
And I'm sitting here reading, and what we was coming up with had nothing to do practically with none of this stuff. You can't show me a duplicate draft of that, can you?
You have three drafts.
Yeah.
Do we?
Yes, they were sent, but I think the main thing might be to take and look. And after we go through here and whatever we do, our next move would be motion it to go forward for final production and agreement on stuff. But that we go over the copy of it and stuff and see if there's anything missing that you, you think should be there or shouldn't be there, you know? But it, all of it is discussed, as I remember, in the times that I was there. And I was gonna, when I concluded here, I was gonna give, take and give a, if you really wanna take a look and go back at the, the past plans and stuff, it really brings, brings forward what has been done, such as the thirty-three million dollars that have been gotten as far as grants or unforgivable loans or that kind of stuff to the city. But so far Eric has passed it on, and maybe we just need to double-check it out a little more, but it was passed on.
If you'd like a paper copy, you can have mine.
Well, my point, my next point is, my next point is, when are we, when did you guys discuss this plan? When was it discussed in council? Was it on the agenda?
It was those two days that we spent.
Yeah, I understand that, but you said you passed it out three times here in the chamber?
No, it was sent via email. It was sent via email three times for, yeah, approval or for changes to be made, or here's an upgrade, if you see something you don't like, you know, pass it back. So that's where it came through was all through email.
I'm sitting here thinking this to council.
No, this is our first presentation on it tonight from Eric.
Okay. All right, well, I should see three of them in my email. So I'll look it up.
Okay, no problem.
All right, so this one is about public-private partnerships. And, you know, this is about the city engaging in partnerships that, you know, expand their capacity to do work, sometimes beyond what they would be able to do by themselves. So the point of calling out a group like the Greater Freeport Partnership is because that's the city and the chamber and other organizations that have come together to create a larger impact, not just around economic development, but also around tourism and, and business supports. And it's called the Greater Freeport Partnership. So that's why that particular organization is called out. It's also a large investment by the city, so it's another one that the city pays particular attention to, right? So city doesn't have an economic development department.
Are we talking about the Greater Freeport development? Or are we talking about the city chamber council's visions? And, and what we're considering as our own vision as a council? Are we merging the two together as I speak?
Nope.
Okay, cause I hear no separation between the two just yet.
Well, I think, let's read on. So I was just pointing out why that particular organization is mentioned, and maybe, you know, in a plan like this, other organizations are not mentioned. But as far as the goal goes, I think this'll ring true for the city, and you can listen in and let me know what you think. Public and private partners are aligned and create clear value for the citizens of Freeport and its partners. So that's about the city. We work closely with local, regional, and statewide economic development partners by aligning our work with shared resources. So that's the idea of investing in a partnership. Individual and corporate citizens generously invest in our community through partnerships, including public-private projects that enrich the quality of life in the city. So the first strategy around that is around economic development. And there are some bullet points listed here, one of which you wrote when we were together on Friday or Saturday, I don't remember which day. But these words came straight from you that day. The idea of providing support for small businesses, startup tools, basic business services, business registration with a focus on women-owned and people-of-color-owned businesses. I took those words straight from you, Alderman Sanders.
I see where you got key strategies are. But show me where those quotes come from that you just quoted.
I just read that line. That's an example of how we took feedback directly from a council member and put it straight into this plan, and not just because one council member thought it was a good idea, but because everybody who participated actually agreed with that concept when it was presented by a council member. In this case, for that bullet point, it was you.
Okay.
So that's just one example, you know, and I'm not gonna call out more. My goal isn't to, you know, embarrass anybody or call anybody out. My goal is just to make sure that you see that your work those days translated into this document, because that's exactly where it came from.
All right.
The next bullet point is about partnering to provide internship and mentoring opportunities that create pathways and skills, to skills and career opportunities. So this was born out of the idea of a pilot program that happened this past summer that the city wants to build on. First, for Stevenson County, increasing coordination of services and development objectives with the county. For example, around trails, the airport, nine-one-one, roads and bridges. Those are places where it makes sense for the city to work closely with the county. Healthcare, working with healthcare institutions to improve wellness outcomes and create new opportunities. Working with the park district to coordinate land use and maintenance efforts and attracting resources to provide high-quality recreation areas. And then community initiatives. So there are a lot of community initiatives that happened, and some of the conversation that we had those two days was around the need for the city to be maybe more engaged and at the table around community-led initiatives. So that's where this bullet point stems from. In terms of progress in the partnership focus area, the city and the county are doing a great job sharing equipment, avoiding duplication of equipment costs. They partner on road projects, and an example of that is the Walnut Road and Pearl City Road maintenance. New partnerships opportunities are being explored with FHN to improve wellness outcomes and emergency preparedness. Engagement with the Greater Freeport Partnership supported implementation of new TIF initiatives and urban planning efforts. So that's a, a nice success story from that partnership. And the city partnered with the park district to complete the Berchard Street reconstruction. So those are just four examples of partnership successes and, and good progress that have happened over the last two or three years. All right. Quality, communication, and engagement. So this is about how the city communicates and its efforts to engage the community in its work. And the goal is for the city's communication and engagement efforts being designed to connect with an inclusive, diverse, and growing community. The city shares information and keeps citizens informed of progress and opportunities to participate through multiple channels. If you want to be involved, you're welcome to participate, and you have a voice. Diverse interest groups work together to tackle problems. So that's the goal. Some key strategies are making bilingual communications available for all. Key documents and outreach efforts like web, newsletter, et cetera, will be translated. Expanding city participation in community events to increase visibility and improve connections with residents. So really just having the city show up in more places and being accessible. Improving storytelling and data-sharing efforts to better highlight the progress being made in Freeport. You're seeing some examples of that immediately in this plan and more to come. Establish a membership, a mentorship program to create jobs for young people. So those are some key engagement strategies that you've laid out. Looking ahead and looking back, the communication director position was established to drive improved communication. We've adopted the branding that was developed for that into this document. Website's been improved, there's a lot of really good examples that I can see just from my distance. Home rule was successfully maintained, maintaining a critical funding, federal funding support. It's probably the biggest communication success in the last two to three years. And then a communication plan is in place and in progress, or in practice, rather.
Question?
Yes.
Will we see for this, this plan? Will we get a, a progress report quarterly, whatever, something like that?
It's up to you.
Well.
I don't, I don't provide it.
I think that's a good idea, but I don't know who's doing the dictorio right here, but the thing about it is, somebody need to be taking notes. And, and if, I don't know who's, who's implementing this strategic plan, but there should be more input, I believe, that should be involved in this. So you're putting it out there, but who are the ones that's gonna carry it out, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I hear you bringing a lot of initiatives that we should go by far as our strategic planning, but where is it designated to? Is this just the council to carry this function up? We haven't talked about that yet.
Yeah, well, the short answer to that is yes. The city council and mayor are responsible for carrying, making sure the plan is carried out. And the administrator and his team are responsible for executing the plan.
So we need to start coordinating and giving a, giving a forecast of what year we're planning on starting this and how, how long will it take? We have not crossed that barrier yet, but, you know, something to mention.
Yeah, I think it's a good, I think it's a good thing to mention. I've been talking with Rob about ideas for having progress visible to the council and the entire community on the website. That's something you all have to decide to do and implement. You know, or you could hire somebody to do that. I'm not pitching that right now, I'm just saying that's a thing you could do. So, but yes, I think it's a good idea. I think cities that do this well track their progress and communicate it. I think we've got two or three left, so zip through it here. Effective land use. The goal is to make long-range land and development plans. Land use within the city is designed to create opportunities for housing, businesses, and new amenities for citizens to enjoy. The city creates master plans for land to encourage development in the downtown, new housing in neighborhoods, and the creation of green spaces in the floodplain and elsewhere in our community. Partners, developers, and citizens inform these plans, generate value from the city's land use policies. So the, the strategies here, most of these build on previous work that's been happening and, and previous strategies. Developing the Downpound Master Plan is one new one. But completing the Third Ward Flood Mitigation Project is a continuation. Activating vacant properties is a new one, we mentioned that a little bit in an earlier page. Identifying and engaging with developers to spark and align investment. You guys have been doing that well, and there's more to do. Creating a residential workforce housing development strategy for areas like Berchard Hills, an example, and others to increase available housing. And creating a five-year plan for Alberta's Airport focused on attracting private use and investment. It's a underutilized asset in your community. So some progress, the PDM grant was extended to 2024 for completion of the Third Ward Flood Mitigation Project. That's good news, gives you more time to, to execute that. The zoning map policy updates were completed, which makes it more clear for developers and others, you know, how they can develop land in the community. And the vacant and abandoned property inventory map is completed. So that allows you then to now say, okay, what do we do with these properties? You know, now that we've gained control of them and, and put them into a more active use case. This last one, I think it's the last one. Vibrant arts and culture experiences. This has been a growing initiative over the time that I've worked with Freeport. It's been exciting to watch. Freeport's arts and culture sector offers extraordinary cultural events, learning opportunities, and outdoor experiences for people of all ages. Distinctive cultural districts are linked to Freeport's bustling commercial districts. It's the idea of putting these things next to each other and creating, you know, synergies. Open spaces, bike paths, parks, and greenways are abundant throughout the city. The river is accessible for recreation enjoyed by residents and visitors alike. So some key strategies are launching the Arts and Culture Commission, supporting cultural events, or festivals and events, rather, facilitating the art museum transition to a new location, and exploring the establishment of an art district and a cultural district. These things can be useful for attracting funding to support arts and culture. So that's why these districts can matter. One recent progress, like I said, new initiative, so short list, but a big idea. The Chicago Avenue Streetscape Project was completed and looks great. And that is the end of the plan. So I appreciate the chance to show all that to you. I do encourage you all to look at the draft. And if you'd like to have changes, just let me know. And we'll make an update, and we'll get you the final version that you all can approve at the meeting of your choosing.
Eric, we really appreciate your presentation and this, your time that you put into it, and, and thanks to the council members who put time in it and participated. There's a lot of good things that have happened that it really takes, like was mentioned, a review of this to see where you were and where you are now and how much progress you have made. Cause there has been, there has been progress in all the areas. The other thing, as we, as Alderman Sanders mentioned, and we talk about how are we gonna follow this? You know, there's, there's a whole different group that can take part of that, and the council being part of that, the communication person, Director Boyer, the mayor. All of the people in the city staff have daily access to some of these things and see what's going on. You know, so even if we have any discussion at any council meeting, it helps you to make aware of where you're at. And also, when we get memos and everything, and a resolution is brought forward, you'll see at the bottom of that resolution, it'll be down here at the bottom, two sentences, as to where it fits into that strategic plan. So that's helpful, so you can take a look at just what it's helping, the real reason for it, where it does fit into the plan. Cause the more we work on staying on this plan and keeping on track in this, without a doubt, the more that. a doubt, the more that'll, it'll help the city grow and, and help working with our partners also.
Yeah, you bet. Those are good practices. And I think Alderman Sanders' suggestion about some quarterly update or dashboard is, is a good one. It doesn't have to take as long as it did to talk about the whole plan.
Sure.
You could decide that each quarter you're going to look at two sections of the plan and just get an update on those two sections and rotate across that over the course of the year, you know, things like that to make it efficient or a dashboard that you guys can see on a website page, you know, something like that. Those are all really easy ways and not, not time-consuming ways to keep track of your progress.
Thank you much. Does anybody have any questions at all for Eric?
Eric, have you made another plan just for council to meet again to continue with the progress that you are making? I, I don't know if we implemented new. Oh my goodness. Let me get my bearing on. I can't even see Parker over there. But have you thought about that possibility that we should go back again to see what else we can coordinate and implement into this plan? Because I think this plan should be somewhat close to a pamphlet, you know, booklet or something like that. We're done with it. Because I feel like all of the, all of the strategies and ideas from the council would be a great, great help to all of us, you know? Cause I need, I need a revision. I would tell you that right now.
That's all right.
I need to be revised on a lot of the stuff that we did talk about and, and see if we can do some more, you know, strategies.
Yeah. I, I think if the council wants to get together again, you guys can let me know and I'll help you figure that out.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, it's not, it's not for me to decide.
Yes, Alderman Monroe.
Yeah, you know, I, yeah, the comment that I have, well, I've got a couple of comments. First of all, I, I, you know, the biggest problem with this plan and with the previous plans, there are no true measurable metrics on this. So there's nothing that we have to hold, not just the staff to account, but also that, you know, we don't have metrics to know and relate and understand if we're hitting our goals or not. And I, I understand the situation that at the bottom of every request, that there is a, there is a line that says, you know, this is attributed to achieving this goal for 2040. But those, those statements are very bland and contain no meat and substance to them. And I, I feel that it is lip service to this plan. And that was the main reason I didn't participate this year is I, I don't see the value that this plan putting forth brings to the city of Freeport. We're, you know, we're cutting, we need to cut corners at every possible turn, you know? The biggest problems that we face on a daily basis is funding. And that funding is not being spent in a manner that's in alignment with this plan. And the generalities don't hold anybody accountable to achieving those goals. Because if you don't have achievable goals, you can't hold the city manager accountable. You can't hold the council accountable. You can't hold the mayor accountable or any of the staff. And we need those types of things in that, in that paper and not a generality. And that's our biggest problem.
There you go. Thank you, Alderman Monroe. That's, you hit it, you're hitting all the cylinders. You, you, you're making the right points at this point in time. And I wish you had been there because it seemed like you had been through this process before. And, and, and the intellect that you carry could have been a great addition to our plan of that meeting that day. So yeah, I think, I think if we could have had you in there, I, I, I missed that part, but you are absolutely right on a lot of the points that you were making. So yeah, let's, I hope that we can get you inducted over there to the next meeting, man, because it truly needs that type of insight so we can put something valuable in our plan. Yeah, and I, and I think that your suggestion and what you brought out just now is very valuable to us as a council. And, and hopefully we help have you available the next time around.
Any other comments by any council member?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
Alderman Monroe, on the plan, at the bottom of each one of these areas of priority, it lists three or four recent progress. And those are just recent progress. It's not a, it's not a complete list. Is, do you consider those things not to be measurable? I'm a little confused.
No, I, if I may, Alderman.
Sure.
I, I think, I think where the measurables come, and we've highlighted a couple of those, and I'll give one example, that's the street. And the city manager brought this up and said, we need to do eight miles of roads a year in order to do, you know, to achieve our goals in 20 to 25 years. And we have none of those types of, you know, metrics in there, you know, from a standpoint. How do you know if you're hitting your goal if you don't know what the metric is you're trying to achieve? And what we're going after are generalities. And I know that we have achieved certain things recently, but we also were given a lot of money, you know, post COVID. We were given a lot of grants. We've gotten a lot of grants. If we don't maintain those, all of a sudden, we no longer have any measurable metrics. And we can say that we're achieving some goals, but really, what, what are the measurables? And that's from a, you know, coming from a sales background, I think my biggest concern is, is not having a number or having something tied to achieving, you know, like a 20% decrease in crime in the city for the police department or, you know, faster response times for ambulance and fire. Whatever it is we, we come up with, I don't think we have those types of measurements to drive staff and drive the city in the direction we want it to go. And that's, that's my biggest concern. And I brought those up pre the meetings with, you know, with Eric. And, you know, I, I didn't really get a warm fuzzy and, you know, tonight I'm sitting here listening to this and I, I think Alderman Sanders is, is trying to, you know, say the same thing. And I, you know, my big concern is this. I, I think we have to figure out how we can hold each other accountable on this. And that, from a council standpoint, we're not doing this day in, day out, 40 hours, 50, 60 hours a week. That's what we have staff for, that's what we have the departments for, and, you know, the city manager and the mayor, you know, we've got everybody, you know, kind of in, in line, but I don't think we have the true metrics to measure it accurately or to the point that the citizens are looking to see. You know, because if we only achieve one mile of road a year, we could say, oh, we did a mile of road. We're, we're achieving our goals, but in reality, we're falling further and further behind. And that's my biggest concern right now is that what this plan, the city manager has put forward as far as the budget goes, as well as the, the 2040, you know, plan, is that we don't have those measurables and we don't really understand or know by this document if we're being successful in turning the city around.
Right.
That's, that's just my two cents.
Yeah, yeah. I like that.
Any other comments? If we'd like to move this on for approval and more work on it and so on and so forth, we need a motion and a second to do that, to move it to the third meeting?
Yeah. I, I motioned that we set it for the next meeting or we continue to elaborate on it for the next meeting. Meetings, I put it like that.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
I didn't catch all. I didn't catch everything you said. Did you say, did you propose moving it forward to the next COW? Is that what you said?
No, I believe we could, I didn't say it that way.
Okay.
Okay, I, I believe that we could move it to the next, what I meant was the next.
Regular council meeting.
Regular council meeting. And we can do more discussion on it at that point.
Okay.
If there's anything that needs to be done, we can, that way we can stay in the process of, of moving it forward and revise what we need to if we'd like.
I misheard, thank you.
No, no, that's, that's correct. It was very vague the way I said it. Yes, Alderman Sanders.
I know, I know this may not be the appropriate place to perform the coalition that is going to get together and put this together. But at some time, at one point in time, we're going to have to get together outside of the public's views so we can get right down to the point of how do we meet these goals? You know, I just don't want us to come out here half-baked and, and we don't have all our ducks in the road to, to, to let the people have an insight about how we're going to progress and how we're going to move forward.
Okay, that, that conversation has to start out with city manager Blair, because there happens to be the Freedom of Information Act that no more than two of us can get it together for anything. So we're, we're strictly bound by that. So, I mean, the conversations can happen. The conversations can happen between the two Aldermen. The conversation can happen between the mayor and somebody and, or the city manager, but those items, those items can be done, but we can't.
Can't have a courtroom?
No.
A, a private session?
No.
We can't do that?
No, two people is the most you can get together. Is that correct?
Yep. So if you want to have more than two people together discussing the strategic plan, then we would need to call a special meeting.
Yeah.
You know, and post the notice of it and, and then you guys can meet and talk about it just the way you guys did the first time.
A special meeting?
Yes, if you want to, if that's what.
It's not private.
Yeah. Not a private meeting.
Open to the public.
Okay, not private, all right?
Right, so it'd be open, open to the public.
Yeah, well, the way we're directing this is right back here in this chamber. We're not having enough time to discuss the particulars in private until we get the points settled as a unit, as a council, so we can talk about it publicly. Now, I, I don't understand why we can't do that.
Well, as Alderman, Open Meetings Act, that's the problem is that if there's a, any more than two of the Aldermen together at any time, talking about city business, if there's three of you or more, then that constitutes a public meeting that has to have an agenda posted for it. Then it has to be open to the public to come in and attend if they want to, just like the city council meeting or the COW meetings or whatever it is there. So that's, you know, so there's, there's not a time that you can just say, all eight of you guys can meet, lock the door and not allow the public in.
That's the way I was looking at it.
Unfortunately, you know, the, the law doesn't allow for us to do that.
Yeah, and just to be clear, I wouldn't facilitate a session that wasn't a public meeting for a public body like this.
Yeah, but you don't do strategy in public. This is not, this is not the form that you use to come together to put a strategy together. Even I know that. But the thing about it is the city has its protocols, its procedures and things like that.
The state has them. We have nothing.
Yeah, and that's, that's not a city rule necessarily. That, that's a state statute rule. The open meetings have the state statute, so.
Well, I can't go against that.
Okay.
But it was a good idea. I'd like that.
Would we like to move this forward? Could we call a vote on it, please?
Clem?
Aye.
Monroe?
Aye.
Simmons?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
And Sanders?
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Eric. I appreciate it. We'll be looking at this and anything that needs to come up, we'll, we'll keep in touch and work together on it. So thank you for your work on it. It was very helpful. We appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is item number eight, a presentation by Greater Freeport Partnership regarding Economic Development by Andrea Scholz-Winter, Executive Director. Thank you. Thank you and your crew and your board members for coming. We appreciate it.
Thank you for having us. Just want to make sure this doesn't fall over. There we go. Good evening. I was informed of the city's intent to reduce the partnership's funding for 2024 by nearly $200,000, nearly a quarter of our budget, and to remove economic development from our scope of services provided by the city. On behalf of myself, staff, and the partnership's Board of Directors, I'm here to convey my severe disappointment in this decision and explain why our organization must remain fully funded by the city of Freeport. Most in this room were not on council, are city employees when the partnership was formed, and some might not have knowledge as to why or how. The partnership was formed in 2018 because the city wanted to stop funding five separate organizations. These organizations were the Freeport Chamber of Commerce, Freeport Downtown Development Foundation, the Stevenson County Visitor and County Convention and Visitors Bureau, Northwest Illinois Development Alliance, and the All In Community Messaging Campaign. All of these organizations received some funding from the city to the total amount of $550,000 annually. Last year, the partnership was paid $425,000, saving the city $125,000. Due to its existence, the partnership has saved the Freeport, the city of Freeport $625,000 and provided even greater services than these legacy organizations ever did individually. The partnership entered into contract with the city in June of 2018. And the scope of focus, the scope and focus of that contract was dictated by the city to include services these five organizations previously performed. Economic development, business development, business support services, tourism and marketing, and community events. Beyond financial savings, merging these organizations created operating efficiencies, aligned missions, and reduced confusion by creating one organization, one voice, one mission. During the lifetime of this contract, the partnership has invoiced the city for payment on quarterly intervals by outlining activities and services provided within each TIF district. This reporting and invoicing format was requested by the city. The initial contract will expire December 31st, 2023, and any amendments to this contract, such as a decrease in compensation or a change in scope of services, requires an amendment that must be approved by city council by resolution. In negotiating a new contract to begin in 2024, the partnership is willing and invites the city to align initiatives with its new strategic plan, as we've just discussed in the previous presentation here this evening. A future contract will need to be mutually agreed upon by both parties with a clear understanding of scope of services that the city wants the partnership to provide. Before making determinations on the partnership's work to advance strategic initiatives, it is helpful to note the organization's development highlights since its inception. In just five short years, the partnership has facilitated projects and collaborative arrangements that have previously not been prioritized. In regards to economic development work, we brought government bodies together in an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Freeport and Stevenson County with the goal of extending water and sewer service to Mill Race Crossing. Using ARPA funds, easements are secured and engineering design completed. Though the project has not moved forward due to increased cost in construction, progress was made by establishing an intergovernmental agreement, securing easements and leveraging commitments from private companies towards future completion. When possible, again, collaboration and commitment in the intergovernmental agreement can be used to extend water and sewer to other properties along Lamb Road to fuel future development in the corridor and potentially Freeport-Alberta's Airport. The partnership successfully facilitated negotiations that involved the acquisition of Meadows Mall and subsequent $12 million investment to renovate shuttered space and recruit four new retail tenants. To secure this investment, the project required work by the partnership to expand the Northwest Illinois Enterprise Zone, a TIF redevelopment agreement, and the adoption of CPACE financing. Also, our working relationship with local banks was key to closing the deal. The partnership administers, administers the Northwest Illinois Enterprise Zone, and the work to establish this zone via the state's rigorous application process was undertaken by the partnership to the tune of $85,000 without any contribution from city government. We successfully expanded the zone for High Point Solar Project to invest $109 million to develop a 100 million watt solar project. Megawatt, excuse me, not million watt. From the initial phone call to shovels in the ground was two years. Economic development projects are marathons, not sprints. Since its creation in 2020, the zone has facilitated over $200 million in investment and retained or created 633 jobs. Many of these employees live in Freeport and help support the tax base here. Even during construction, the crews brought, bought supplies here, stayed in our hotels. Even during construction, the crews brought, bought supplies here, stayed in our hotels and contributed to sales, fuel and hotel tax, all reaped by the city. The partnership worked with Atkins Energy to secure an agreement with CAP CO2 Solutions to build the first ever facility to convert ethanol plant waste to green methanol. Working on this project required me to sign a non-disclosure agreement until the business felt comfortable announcing their plans to the public. Signing an NDA is not something a city employee can do. During the last five years, the landscape for business attraction and retention has been tumultuous at best, especially in this global economy. We have seen businesses that were once locally owned be purchased and the deci- decision makers are no longer in the community. The acquisition of both First McNess and MetLife by farmers and the consequential business relocation and layoff of employees are the ripple effects of globalization. Unfortunately, there is no incentive large enough at times to keep these companies here. Instead, the partnership focuses on supporting and retaining our existing companies, ensuring they have a path to grow locally. The companies and employers we have already, we have here already are the future of our growth. They feel supported by the work of the partnership because of the relationships we've built and the expertise we have provided in key matters that allow their businesses to be successful. The relationships we have built cannot be replicated. We have built trust with the private sector organizations who currently support and employ this community. Let us continue that great work. However, contrary to what is being proposed in this arrangement offered by the city, economic development is not just initiated, the initiation of business attraction and expansion projects. Before there can be shovels in the ground, there needs to be so much more. The fact that the partnership understands this holistic approach proves that we are ingrained in the true work of economic development. Companies need talented, trained workforce to grow. To ensure that this happens, the partnership connects employers and educational institutions to build the workforce pipeline. The partnership provided and analyzed regional employment data to inform the creation of the Freeport High School Career Academies. We continually connect local employers with area high schools to help students understand the opportunities that are available for their future careers and how they can build a successful financial future with local employers. We also tailor workforce solutions to individual business needs, such as hosting and promoting job fairs, as we did for In-Grown Farms. Or connecting businesses to the workforce connection to develop apprenticeship programs, attend hiring events or provide training. Before the partnership, before the pandemic, excuse me, the partnership worked with the Stevenson County Probation Department and Highland Community College to build and implement the Workforce Readiness Program that helped individuals within the criminal justice system find and keep jobs with local employers. We are promoting programs such as the Boys and Girls Club Yield Program to connect individuals with trades and making connections with the Business Institute at Highland Community College for certification and skills necessary for careers needed locally. Admittedly, we have faced tremendous obstacles along the way, including over two years of pandemic impacts that demonstrated the app, adaptability of the partnership to consent, continue to serve businesses in numerous ways once unimagined. As other regions struggled to identify the Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Organization, or CVB, that would lead recovery efforts, the collaborative model of the partnership provided the one-stop entity needed for information to navigate health and safety guidance, e-commerce options, opening restrictions, promotion under regulations and eventually the grants they needed to rebound. We executed our mission in novel, relevant ways to fit the needs of those who were strained by that pandemic. In the face of adversity, we adapted for the success of Freeport and Stevenson County, its businesses and our members. We have served as a community navigator for the state's various back-to-business granting programs. And we have successfully infused grant dollars totaling 1.8 million into Freeport County, Freeport and Stevenson County businesses. Economic development is also helping entrepreneurs start businesses. We've received over $30,000 in various grants from private foundations to develop our first community business academy. We are set to launch our second business academy in early 2024 and look forward to great programming from both our public and private business, pub, public partners and private businesses who are all working together to help new businesses start and thrive here. And after these businesses are up and running, we celebrate their success with ribbon cuttings to help them gain customers and continue to promote them and find resources they need in each stage of their business development. Economic development is not just business attraction, it's providing service to the business during the entirety of its existence. Something we feel will be lost if only a portion of development is managed by the city. The partnership is also changing the way Freeport looks. Not just aesthetically, but also how the community is perceived by residents and visitors. The partnership began the application process to become a Main Street community for downtown Freeport to provide an organizational framework to the economic development approach to the downtown. Addressing issues of development, preservation, promotion and business ensures that investment into buildings and streetscape initiatives are completed in alignment with plans for long-term growth. The development of downtown is another area where the partnership is able to leverage grants and donations from local businesses to beautify the business district with seasonal planting and new streetscape furniture. To alleviate the work on city crews, the partnership organizes successful quarterly cleanup events to be completed by volunteers. This enables city crews to work on other projects such as roadways, repair service lines and reduce costs. Investment in the beautification of downtown and other major corridors has fallen on the partnership. This year's beautification initiative to plant downtown, as well as redevelop traffic medians on Locust Avenue, was quoted at $30,000. With a $1,500 check from the city, the partnership leveraged donations from local businesses to make up the difference to create and maintain beautiful spaces residents expect and deserve to see in their city. Using a holistic vision of economic development, marketing campaigns are created not just to entice visitors, but also used as tools to attract businesses and residents who see the area not just as a place for, to stop for the weekend, but as a place they can call home. Making the best of our local dollars, the partnership applied for and received a $10,000 Tourism Attraction Festival's grant for Pretzel City Brew Fest. This event attracts visitor, visitors from over 100 miles away and provides a reason for people to stay in our hotels, eat, shop and see the changes happening in Freeport. Funds were used for capital expenses that increased efficiencies for all downtown events. Continuing to bring new people here for a great experience. With that support, the partnership received the 2022 Illinois Excellence in Tourism Award for the best event for Pres- Pretzel City Brew Fest. An achievement, achievement that has not been done by such a small destination before. The creativity of programming and amenities of our region was also a recipient of a $15,000 marketing partnership grant from the Illinois Office of Tourism for a Be a Trailblazer Visitor Campaign this year. The grant doubled the amount spent to draw visitors to our region without the need for additional local support from government or private entities. The campaign ended in September and introduced over 100,000 people to attractions in Freeport and Stevenson County as they clicked to learn more about the photos and videos they saw online. Economic development is not just about getting new people here, it is also about creating an ongoing positive experience for residents and businesses who have already made a choice to be in Freeport. To increase the quality of life and support local businesses, the partnership executes 11 events each year that draws thousands of visitors and residents to downtown Freeport. The expanded idea of economic development bodes well when you consider that the largest employer in Stevenson County is work from home. When people can work from anywhere, you better make sure your community offers the quality of life that makes them want to stay. In addition to the events, we go to great lengths to promote good work and positive energy of residents and organizations in Freeport through social media shares, weekly digital event guides, calendar of events, website, blog, radio and television appearances. Promoting the destination of Freeport to residents, visitors and businesses is economic development. The economic development work of the Greater Freeport Partnership is not just incentivizing and courting businesses who want to locate here. Economic development is creating a business-friendly culture and community where businesses want to be and your workforce wants to live. The partnership cannot be sustained without the city's full commitment. In short, the commitment of our other partners will follow. Our partners, partner-level members will stop investing. These businesses invest in the organization because of the economic development work we do. If we stop doing that work, they stop investing, further reducing partnership funding by an additional $250,000. Other, our, our other government partner, Stevenson County, has already indicated without the city's full commitment, they have deep concern that the partnership will not be able to maintain capacity to provide services to the county. Another $105,000 will disappear. To be clear, without the city's full commitment, the partnership will cease to exist. The partnership cannot be successful as an à la carte organization performing selected, select chamber tourism workforce or economic development functions. Its viability is dependent upon the synergies achieved by being an all-in organization. The partnership is a 501(c)(3) organization, allowing us to leverage public dollars to encourage private investment through business membership, partnership-level investors and event sponsorships. This is not something the city will be able to do. Is the city prepared to take on all the services that the partnership provides? Let's focus on economic development work as it specifically pertains to business attraction. Economic development work will prove very difficult if handled through the city with the simple standard of every developer, of every developer is strict confidentiality to protect their intent until the needs are met and their questions are answered. As a government entity, every communication, email, file, loan application or economic development proposal is discoverable under the Freedom of Information Act, or FOIA. Perspective businesses have no interest in sharing proprietary information regarding their finances or operations with an entity that can risk FOIA discovery. If the city cannot get businesses to provide the necessary information, deals will not close, projects will not happen. To maintain confidentiality, even economic development organizations, such as the partnership, working to close deals, sign non-disclosure agreements. I signed an NDA in May of this year regarding a project with a manufacturer. A city employee cannot sign an NDA, thus information will not be available to them. When economic development work is in the municipal reason, municipal arena, it is politicized. Lengthening the project timeline, which in turn often increases costs, making the project impossible to close. This will frustrate the business or developer, resulting in them walking away from Freeport. For these exact reasons, economic development organizations exist and operate outside the realm of government. Look regionally. Our counterparts understand this, that is why Greater Sterling Development Corporation, Northwest Illinois Economic Development Corporation and Green County Development Corporation exist. Separate economic development organizations are designed to leverage private investment and operate in the space between business and government, engaging partners to broker deals. Consider the other economic development services, services the city will need to provide. Is the city prepared to administer the enterprise zone and provide all the necessary reporting to the state? Who will be your main street coordinator? How will that program operate without its mandated separate board? The partnership provides record-keeping and administrative services to the Community Development Corporation. How will that be facilitated? In closing, please remember, cutting our funding will have immediate implications for the partnership and long-term ramifications for the city. Such a significant funding reduction will impact the long-term solvency of the partnership and resulting cost to the city will be far greater than the money you hope to save by reducing our funding. City government cannot offer the same services to businesses and developers as an outside organization. The requirements of confidentiality and the ever-changing political climate will keep Freeport from attracting investment. If the city council is not willing to consider fully funding the partnership, it should consider assuming all the responsibilities currently performed by the partnership, as partial funding will not be adequate. The business community is being informed of the city's intention and in turn will look to the city of Freeport to provide all the services previously performed by the partnership if this organization ceases to exist. Nicole will now distribute a letter from our chairman of the board, chairman of our board, Mark Ridley, and a handout summarizing the main points I've outlined tonight. I thank you for your time and attention and for your thoughtful consideration of fully funding the partnership for continued and sustained growth of Freeport. Thank you.
Andrea, thank you very much for your presentation, I appreciate it. And you're saying this letter that Mark sent out is similar to what you said, or is, can we get a copy of what you've said?
This evening? Yes, you sure can.
No, no, you don't have to be this evening. Could you please email us a copy of that? I truly appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Okay. Has anybody got any overall questions? I'd like to hold it to a minimum, cause the questions that should come out back and forth should be either between Rob and the partnership, since he's our representative for the partnership, but we can come forward with anything that we'd like to, to Rob or to anybody else. Has anybody got anything at this point that they'd like to add?
Well, since you asked. Since we on this path of, uh, well, we're talking about the reduction of the, um, funding for the Greater Freeport, how did we get to this point? Can we answer that question, first of all?
Surely, there's probably a couple different questions of how we got to that point. But there's been one similarity, I, to give you a little history, which you probably don't want to hear. I've been involved in this for probably 20 years and seen different factions of it one way or another. This was formed in 1989, okay, or excuse me, in, uh, 2018, I'm sorry kids, uh, 2018. And you can get a copy of the agreement, okay, and check and see what it says, how it says. But as Andrea brought up, it was a combination of taking and putting five different places together to come up with one organization that would handle what the city would need or what people are looking for to be involved in economic development in city of Freeport, also with many of the downtown things that are happening. The enterprise zones, as we mentioned, and many other things that you don't see or hear of, that Andrea brought up here.
Right.
That's why it's important for us to take a look at that. And the, the, at that period of time, I was on the council when it was agreed to, cause I've got the note here that McLanahan and Keister, uh, were the person that made the votes to move it forward. Okay, so, we need to take a look at, uh, what the partnership does, okay? What our, Andrea's laid out, uh, very good as far as what the funding change would mean to, be to them. Okay, and we need more conversation with Rob and what, what the conversation is moving forward.
Right.
You know, there's always a, a starting point and a finishing point and, you know, nothing's a, a done deal, but I think we need to move things forward and have conversations back and forth between, uh, between everybody as far as what's going on, what's expected, what, what we think should change, what, what should happen and, uh, that type of things. Andrea, do you have anything else you wanna bring up or any, any of your, I know you have many members of the board there. If they'd like to speak or anything, feel free, you know. Did a very nice job on the presentation, we appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm not looking at anybody jumping up, so I think that, I think I've said it for the group, but I think that yes, we would, obviously, we want to entertain conversations, dialogue.
Sure. And that would be expected on both parts, so, uh, any other comments, questions? We appreciate you coming and presenting and thank you guys for coming, we appreciate it. Good to see the support for the partnership. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is item number nine regarding ordinance to opt out of the requirements under the Paid Leave Act for All Workers. That's going to be presented by, is that presented by Marie or by Rob? By Rob.
Thank you, Alderman. The Paid Leave Act for All Workers, Public Act 102-1143, becomes effective January 1st, 2024, and mandates employers provide up to 40 hours of paid leave during a 12-month period for many types of employees in Illinois, including municipal employees. School districts and park districts were the only units of local government that were expressly excluded from the act. The purpose of the act was to ensure paid leave was provided to all employees in Illinois. As you may be aware, the city of Freeport has a longstanding history of already providing paid leave to its employees through policies which include sick time, vacation, holiday, et cetera. Provision of the Act, Section 15, exists to provide an exemption to municipalities which already provide employees paid leave. Significant confusion currently exists surrounding the act, which unfortunately was not resolved in most of the recent legislative veto sessions. Municipalities have expressed concern to the legislature about the act's unfunded mandates and the confusion that may arise regarding the paid leave that may be taken. Municipalities have further expressed concern about the ability to provide public safety, i.e., police and fire, if paid leave can be taken without notice to the municipality. However, the act is clear that it does not prohibit an employer from adopting an evenly applied leave policy to allow, to, to address the operational issues that meet safety objection, objectives. As a result, staff is recommending that the city adopt the ordinance that was included in your packet, and this is obviously just for a conversation tonight, so no official action tonight, but except to maybe move it forward to the next council meeting.
Are there any, yes, Alderman Parker?
We already have a leave act that we provide?
We, we provide two weeks a year for most junior employees, and we also provide sick time, one sick day per month that accrues up to, I believe, 1,300 hours, so.
What's the difference between what we provide and what this ordinance provides?
Well, it, we already provide time off in excess of what this, what this act is requiring, so that is kind of what's generating the need to clarify our ordinances so that we can continue to move forward in that way. The ordinance, the most important section here says the city hereby adopts its current paid leave policy for all city employees as set forth in the City of Freeport Code of Ordinances, essentially saying that the employee handbook and all collective bargaining agreements to which the city is a party and all other binding legislative action governing paid leave adopted by the city council of city of Freeport as the same may be amended from time to time. However, in no event shall the city as an employer provide less than one day of paid leave per year to any city employee. What, what that's saying essentially is if you're not covered under collective bargaining, which is already out there, right? You've got ASME contracts, you've got police and fire contracts, and then you, yeah, and then you also have your city hall employees who are not unionized. All it's saying is even including, let's say, your temporary summer mowers, you can't do less than one day. But we already offer everybody two weeks, or depending on their, their seniority, would have more, but the minimum we provide is, is two weeks of vacation and then another roughly 12 days of sick leave per year.
We're not taking anything away from our president?
Absolutely not.
Alderman. Go ahead. Shadle.
Part of what you had mentioned is there's ongoing litigation downstate involving this as well. By opting out of it, we would still be, if the law is changed after they get through doing whatever they do down in Springfield, we would still be, have to adhere to what comes out of that if they change the wording on this. This just eliminates us from the fracas as it stands now.
Yes, essentially, that is correct.
Andrew Boyer. We've got a whole bunch of legal mumbo jumbo here. Could we kind of, one thing I'd like to say, okay, is how many, how many, I'm not looking for names or any of that, but how many people would this change or would it change? And if so, you know, what are our costs and stuff on?
Essentially, it doesn't, doesn't really have any major impact except for on an operational standpoint. So, if this ordinance, let's say we postpone approving this ordinance and then we continue on with whatever the state puts out there, the main impact as far as I can see is the fact that you'd have 40 hours, so you'd have five days that an employee could simply not show up to work, not notify anyone, and, and, and so that's in this as it's currently written from, as, as the state has, has put it together. So essentially, what we're doing is, this is just saying, we're not going to, we're going to put our own ordinance in place because the statute allows a municipality to do so, and we're going to retain all of our current policies, and then if, when this thing is finally vetted out, when the state, whatever the outcome is, won't, won't affect the city.
Okay, we're good. Mayor Miller and Aaron Wannaf.
Right, so, as, as Manager Boyer said, just so, again, I'm just going to kind of try to summarize this in a nutshell. We already meet the requirements of the act, right? The act was geared towards employers in the state that don't give any sort of vacation time at all. We already give all of our employees vacation time. We also give them sick time on top of that there, and some, they are at varying rates depending on their collective bargaining agreement or the employee handbook or whatever it is. So we already give more time than the minimum 40 that this, this act is requiring there. But the clarification, given the fact that there's some scuttle going on down in Springfield as to how this language should be interpreted or this or that, by adopting this ordinance, we are just making it very, very clear that, hey, we're already meeting the requirements of the act. We already give you at least the 40 hours that the act's saying. We're actually giving you more, but it helps to clarify also the fact that, one, we don't have to worry about our employees just taking 40 hours without telling us that they have to schedule it, so that helps us plan for police, fire situations that we're always fully manned and staffed, and it also clarifies the fact that it's not an additional 40 hours because that'd be something that all of a sudden, if we didn't clarify that, there could be an argument that says that, oh, well, employee X is entitled to two weeks vacation. Oh, well, they're going to make an argument that this means that they get three weeks vacation, right? Well, where are we supposed to get the money for that all of a sudden if they choose to make that argument there? So this kind of takes that argument out of play by saying, look, we have our own ordinance, and we already have policies and procedures put in place that already give our employees more than the minimum that this act is requiring. So that's all this, this ordinance is doing right now.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Alderman Clem?
Yes, Alderman Monroe.
So, you know, that's, that's great, but as we saw tonight already, you know, what's been given can be taken away. Why don't we just reference the, the state's position and say, we will, you know, whichever's highest will, will rule, and then only opt out of certain portions of it so that we can stay in alignment with what the state is, is requiring, you know, from that standpoint? I don't understand opting out of the entire piece at this time.
Karen?
Well, there's, there's nothing right now, right now, our current rules and procedures and, and agreements, CBA agreements, there, we already give more than what's required. So we're already above and beyond. There's no employee right now that I believe that gets less than the starting of two weeks there. So, you know, the statute's requiring a week, we already give more than a week, and plus we give sick time on top of that. But if we don't opt out, then I think where we have the problem is with the scheduling because if we stay in, then that 40 hours, 40 of those hours that we give could arguably be subject to a situation where they don't have to tell us that they're going to take their time off, and then that's really difficult to schedule for. So by opting out, we take that issue out of play.
Alderman Sanders?
So, opting out, is the next alternative? Is that, is that be a, is that be a negative or positive?
Staff is saying that opting out is a positive for the city because it gives us more clarity as to our sick time and vacation policies there that we already have in place, and we give more than what the state is saying is the minimum.
How does the union factor into this?
It, it doesn't necessarily because our union agreement's already in place, and they require us to give more time than what the state is saying that we have to give minimally, right? The state's just saying you have to give a minimum 40 hours. We already give, certainly our, our collective bargaining agreements give more than 40 hours to our, our employees that are subject to collective bargaining agreements.
Alderman Parker?
What you're saying, that if we go with the state one, somebody can just take off and not call in and tell them they're not coming?
My understanding is that, that the 40 hours that the state's saying is required has some lax, it, it's debating, being debated right now as to what kind of notice needs to be given to take that time.
You don't have to give any notice. You couldn't run a police or fire department. You had five people doing it, you wouldn't even have a ship show up.
And.
There's no way you can do that.
Right, and again, this is part of the, the scuttle that's, you know, still being up for debate down in Springfield, but if we opt out, then it just says that, hey, what we have in place is what's going to continue to govern.
Thank you.
Yes.
So maybe I'm missing it, but on here, I didn't see that stated, that they would get the minimum, as you've been saying, two weeks. All I see is guarantees one day. So, reading this, it seems as though they will be getting less because what they're getting isn't, isn't stated because I don't see it. Maybe it is, if you can point me in the right direction, but I don't see it saying, like guaranteeing or even addressing what we already have into play except for guaranteeing one day per year.
So, it's, section two, it says, "The city hereby adopts its current paid, adopts its current paid leaves policies for city employees as set forth in the City of Freeport Code of Ordinances, Employee Handbook, and Collective Bargaining Agreements."
Okay, so that, the amount of days, though, is already stated in the city handbook or it varies as?
It's in the handbook, it's in the collective bargaining agreements specifically. So that sentence about the one date, that's just saying that we can't ever go below one. Well, we can't because our agreements and our handbooks say it's going to be more than that already, so.
Any other comments? If not, we need a motion to move it forward to the next council meeting?
So move.
Second.
Roll call vote?
I missed the second.
The second was Parker.
Clem?
Aye.
Monroe?
No.
Simmons?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
And Sanders?
Aye.
The motion is approved five to one.
Okay, thank you very much. We're up to our last item, which is public comments, and we do have a couple emails to be read, and then we open it up to the public.
I'm getting there.
Open it up, Dervin?
Nope. Okay, thank you. The first one is from Lori Myers, a Freeport resident. "I am writing to express great concern regarding the actions of Alderman James Monroe. I was involved in the Facebook discussion between my neighbor Eric Quick and Mr. Monroe. Mr. Monroe repeatedly claimed that Eric wasn't a real person and was, and was hiding behind a fake name, even after I assured Mr. Monroe that Eric is a neighbor and is indeed a real individual. That was insulting enough, but then came the pedophile accusations. I don't have to reiterate how vile it is to be publicly accused of touching children. You all know it. It is unprofessional, defamatory, and should not be tolerated by or of any public official. The non-apology by Mr. Monroe showed no remorse, was not specific to those he defamed, and was not sufficient in light of his actions. There is no excuse for Alderman Monroe's behavior. I believe an ethics review should be conducted. Mr. Monroe's actions should not be brushed under the carpet and forgotten. City officials, whether elected or hired, should be held to a higher standard." Lori Myers. The second is from Chris Alders, sorry if I mispronounced that, a longtime resident of Freeport. "Thank you for your time. I do not believe that enough has been done concerning the disparaging remarks made to a citizen of Freeport by city councilman James Monroe. I do not believe that a half-hearted and vague apology is satisfactory in this matter. Mr. Monroe called a citizen a pedophile. This is most likely the worst accusation and label that could be placed upon someone. This false accusation has placed Mr. Quick in possible danger. Sexual abuse is not a matter that can be thrown around with such callousness and immaturity. If I, and most likely everyone else not on the city council, falsely accuse someone of being a pedophile, would lose their job. I believe that Mr. Monroe should lose his position on the city council as well. I would think that level-headed administrators would not want anything to do with an individual who so easily throws terrible and unfounded accusations towards his constituents. Mr. Monroe, you should do the right thing and resign from your position on the city council, and if this is not done, the council mayor and city manager should remove him from his position. The people will not allow this to be swept under the rug." Chris Alders.
Alderman Parker?
I'd just like to make a comment to any veteran that's out there, that the city, the county clerk's office has a program. You go up there with a copy of your DD Form 214, they give you a military ID card and a list of places around that give you a discount on it. I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but it's a good program for vets.
Where?
At the county clerk's office, Jasmine Winger's office.
County clerk?
County clerk's office, Jasmine Winger's office.
Winger's?
Yeah.
Oh, I, I remember.
Just go up with your, copy your DD Form 214, and she'll do, they'll do all the rest for you.
Okay, thank you for that.
Public comments? Tommy Tate, you're going to tell us about your 21 years with Lesherz. Congratulations, kiddo.
Oh, you, you do a good job, Tom Quinn.
Thank you.
And we, we want to keep you, and Jody Mueller, you didn't see that in, in Facebook. How you like it? And one of the chief, he does a good job at the precinct, he makes sure people behave and all that.
Tommy, we have to compliment Lesherz and yourself for the partnership between you guys for, for 21 years. That's been great for you working for him, and you've been a good employee for him, so congratulations on that. Anyone else like to speak?
That's wonderful.
Motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Are we going to take a roll call? Oh, and now I've missed who gave the motion. I'm so sorry.
Parker and Shadle.
Clem?
Aye.
Monroe?
Aye.
Simmons?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
And Sanders?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you very much.